All right, I'd like to call Planning Commission back to order for this morning to take up our item number eight on our agenda, the last item this morning, which is PC Report 15-006, Initiation of Plan Amendments to the Balboa Park Master Plan and Central Mesa Precise Plan for the incorporation of the Balboa Public House of Public Pacific Relations Expansion. So with that, I will turn it over to staff for presentation.
Good morning. My name is Charlie Daniels. I'm a park designer with the city's Park and Recreation Department. And to quote Monty Python, "And now for something completely different. We're not here for telecom. We are here to request initiation of amendments to the Balboa Park Master Plan and Central Mesa Precise Plan to allow for the expansion of the International Cottages Complex in Balboa Park." Now, Balboa Park, if you're not familiar with it, you need to get out more, but it is located --
[laughter]
It was located immediately north of downtown. It is surrounded by the communities of Uptown, Greater North Park, Greater Golden Hill, and Center City. The project area is actually in the core of the park, in the area highlighted in yellow. And for those of you familiar with the park, this area in the center is the Oregon Pavilion, and the International Cottages are just a little bit to the southwest of it. The scope of the project is to construct new cottages that house nine member nations. The cottages would have central courtyards that would be shared, and they would also be open to the public. There would be new walkways to the cottages that would also improve connections throughout the area, and then there would be additional landscaping placed around the cottages. Now, there are criteria listed for initiating plan amendments. The first is that the amendment request appears to be consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan and community plan. And let me explain, Balboa Park is its own community plan despite it being a park. It's kind of an unusual beast. It's not like your regular community plans where certain parcels have certain designations. All of Balboa Park is a park. The next criterion is that the proposed amendment provides additional public benefit to the community as compared to the existing plan. The third is that public facilities appear to be available. Now, this is a graphic from the original Central Mesa Precise Plan. I say "original" because this area was amended with the Plaza de Panama project that was championed by Dr. Erwin Jacobs. What it shows is, in this area here, these shapes or buildings that have a hatch allow for eight new cottages to be built. And in the text, it says 4,000 square feet. Now, they've built four cottages to date, and this is actually the amended plan from the Plaza de Panama project where it shows four cottages. But those cottages were all built at approximately 1,000 square feet, so that 4,000-square-foot limit has already been used up. Now, what I want to show you next is some graphics before we get into all the boring text, but this is one of the locations where the cottages would be proposed for. Basically, we're looking at just to the south of the complex. This is a view from the southwest, looking kind of north. And this is a little bit more to the east, looking to the north. You'll see a lot of this area is just mulch right now. There is a walkway that separates the mulch area from the turf area over here. But this area is seldom used. I think I've only seen one or two people picnicking, and in fact, if we go back, this was such an oddity, I had to capture them in the picture. The other area where expansion is proposed is to the north of the House of Italy, and also it's the House of Pacific Relations building. And over on the left here is the existing House of Iran. So the expansion would go in this area here. And this is an area looking from the east, looking west toward the back of the Hall of Nations building. And just to give you a little bit of the character, these are the original cottages that were built for -- or some of the cottages that were built for the 1935 exposition. You can see they're very small scale. Each of the cottages has their own unique character. It's manifested in the door shapes and some of the window shapes, in shutter details, and also in the chimneys. You'll see one chimney here, a different type of chimney here, there's another different type of chimney here. So they all have different feel to them, although they all have the same Spanish cottage look. This is one of the newer cottages, and this is just my personal opinion. I think they kind of started going away from that. They started getting a bit more elaborate than the original cottages, and our goal is to try and get back to more of that original cottage look in both style and in size. This is the House of Spain. Again, you can see it's much more detailed and ornate than the original cottages. Now, this is the proposed plan for the cottages area, and it's just a preliminary schematic plan. You can see the original complex here, which is actually 15 original cottages. There's the United Nations Building here, which was an original building for 1935. And then these four buildings right here were the four cottages that were constructed. The proposal is to have three new cottages, either in a triplex or a duplex in a single cottage, whatever the configuration works out best to be, just to the north here. And for context, just across the street and up north a little bit is the Oregon Pavilion. The other group of cottages would be to the south in that area that was primarily shown as mulch in this area here. And when I talked about improving circulation through the cottages, you'll see that there's a new connection out from the back of the Hall of Nations Building over to Pan American Road East that isn't there now. So that would allow people that are flowing through this area to be able to flow up and get to the Oregon Pavilion and other park features up to the north. There would also be improvement to the circulation down in this area. There's a very pinched little connection between the two cottages here. An additional walkway would be added in this area to allow better flow to this area. And you can see the central courtyards that would be shared by the cottages and open to the public. So now into all of the boring text I was telling you about. The first criterion was that meets the goals of the master plan. There are six goals listed in the Balboa Park Master Plan. The first goal is to create within the park a more pedestrian-oriented environment, reduce automobile and pedestrian conflicts, and minimize through traffic. Well, that's a lot of it to be applied just to this cottage area, but staff believes that pedestrian circulation would be improved in this proposed design, and that vehicular circulation would actually not be impacted. And we'll go back to this original plan again. Pedestrian circulation through this area would be improved, both in the northern and southern complexes. Next of the Balboa Park Master Plan goals is to improve public access to the park through an improved integrated circulation system, convenient drop-off points, better parking management, improved signage, and increased security. The improved circulation system shall de-emphasize the automobile belt while increasing public access to the park and park facilities. We believe access to the park and the park facilities, namely the cottages and any additional cottages, would be improved. A lot of the rest of that goal really isn't applicable. The next goal, preserve, enhance, and increase free and open parkland and establish a program of ongoing landscape design, maintenance, and replacement. Reduction of free and open parkland has been minimized. We did receive a proposal from the House of Pacific Relations previously that was a bit more ambitious. Staff's recommendation to the Balboa Park Committee previously was to deny that application, and they basically tabled it and requested the House of Pacific Relations to work with Park and Rec staff to try and come closer to achieving the goals of the master plan. And we feel we've gotten there with this proposal. So while free and open parkland may be reduced minimally, it has been minimized, and we feel that in the spirit of it being minimized, that we've met that goal. And also, the landscaping in the cottage areas will be enhanced, especially above and beyond the mulch that's shown there now. The next is to restore or improve existing buildings and landscaped areas within the park. The new cottages would be architecturally compatible and would enhance the park. This project, since it is in the National Historic Landmark District, would also be going through the Historic Resources Board and their Design Assistance Subcommittee. That would ensure that the cottages that are proposed are going to be compatible with the existing cottages in the park. There would also be new landscaping and decorative paving around the new cottages, which would improve the landscaping in the park, thus meeting this goal. The next goal is to preserve and enhance the mix of cultural and active and passive recreational uses within Balboa Park that serve national, regional, community, and neighborhood populations. Well, the House of Pacific Relations has been around for decades, and one of the problems they have is that a lot of their member nations have to share the Hall of Nations Building. That means they can only use it on a rotating basis, so any of the given nine nations that share it get it once every other month, give or take. So they don't have a permanent home. Adding nine cottages would allow them to move out of the Hall of Nations, have a permanent home, and display their cultures to the public on a weekly basis. The cottages are open on a weekly basis, and I believe the House of Pacific Relations will be talking a little bit about how they plan on expanding their program to be more available to the public. So we feel that additional cottages would expose the community, both local and regional, to cultures from other countries and meet this goal. The next goal is preserve Balboa Park as an affordable park experience for all citizens of San Diego. Well, admission to the International Cottages is free, so expanding the International Cottages and making more cultural opportunities available definitely preserves and enhances the experience for all the citizens of San Diego. There is another goal in the Central Mesa Precise Plan. Those are all from the master plan. This is specifically from the precise plan. Parkland to be converted for building expansions, roads, parking areas, or restricted uses should be minimized to preserve the historic resource and maintain the existing relationships between the natural and built environment. I had mentioned to you the previous proposal that was more aggressive than the one that's before you today, and basically, the proposal has been modified to minimize the expansion of buildings and again, meet the goal of minimizing the impacts to the park. So we feel that this has been achieved. Also, the areas that we've worked with the House of Pacific Relations to focus on are areas that are rarely, if ever, used by the public. Criterion B identified is to propose -- the proposed amendment provides additional public benefit to the community as compared to the existing land use designation, density, intensity, range, plan, policy, or site design. And as noted, providing nine more nations the ability to display their cultures to the public provides an additional benefit to the public. And as noted before, areas of expansion are rarely used. The last criterion, Criterion C, is public facilities appear to be available to serve the proposed increase in density or intensity, or the provisions will be addressed as a component of the amendment process. Staff did express security concerns early on as the proposal was coming out, but we don't feel additional cottages are going to increase the security risk. It just provides additional targets, and I'll be honest with you, one of the problems in the park is the homeless population and some of the activities they have around the International Cottages area. We're going to be working with the House of Pacific Relations to make sure that the cottages and the complexes added onto are going to be visible so that rangers and PD and this park's nighttime security can have good visual access, as well as not creating little niches where homeless people would tend to congregate, or making sure the cottages are secured so they're not as easy to break in as the 80-year-old-plus cottages are. We're also going to be working with them to minimize maintenance requirements in the As far as previous recommendations, on December 4th, 2014, the Balboa Park Committee, which is the recognized planning group for Balboa Park, voted unanimously 5-0 with the abstention by the chair to advise the criteria listed have been met and to initiate amendments to the Balboa Park Master Plan and the Central Mesa Precise Plan for the expansion of the International Cottages area. Staff's recommendation is to initiate amendments to the Balboa Park Master Plan and the Central Mesa Precise Plan. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Vicky Estrada. She is with Estrada Land Planning and representing the House of Pacific Relations, and she'll give you a little bit more detail on the International Cottages area. But as noted, a lot of the designs are going to be worked out, and if plan amendments are initiated, they'll be coming back to the Planning Commission as more developed plans. If you'll bear with me, I'll need to get her --
While he's getting that ready. Again, I'm Vicky Estrada, President of the Estrada Land Planning. Just a little bit of background, I actually -- both the master plan and the precise plan that Charlie referred to, I actually prepared, started in 1980.
Mrs. Estrada, can I hold you up for just a second here? Before we open it up to public comment, I want to see if the commission has any clarifying questions of staff before we get into that and get into the organized presentation. So does the commission have any questions of staff before we open it up? All right, seeing none, and just protocol-wise, you've asked for 10 minutes, so I've got a number of speaker slips. All are in favor today. Nobody is here opposed, so if I can formally get somebody to cede you, or at least two people to cede you some time, we can take care of that, or if you think you're not going to need the full --
I won't need 10 minutes, but I'll be -- I can probably do it in five pretty quickly.
Okay.
Okay? So I'll go ahead and forget all the utter stuff I just said. We start now with the five minutes, right? Okay.
Yeah, we're penalizing you, don't worry.
The point is, all the goals and issues that Charlie talked about, I actually wrote in the mid-'80s. So I mean, certainly, that's something that I'm fairly close to. So just a little bit of additional background, I'm not going to repeat what Charlie said, I'm just going to enhance a little bit. There are 33 houses, countries right now, that have -- that are part of the House of Pacific Relations, and we're proposing that, nine new cottages. We don't have to go over which ones they are, but a little bit more detail. This is the current master plan that was -- that Charlie referred to. This is the one, again, I mean, go back, you can see the Jacobs proposal on the parking structure on the Oregon Pavilion parking lot. But kind of of interest is one of the spaces that we're actually proposing for development to southern area. It actually was shown in the master plan as potential development. So it's not something that's new, that's not been talked about before. Their current precise plan, so you can see it kind of squashed a little bit because of the aspect ratio, but you get the idea. I'm not going to repeat things that Charlie has said, but just to put your mind at ease, that our proposal will work whether or not the Jacobs plan is actually carried through. It is in the existing approved plans. As you recall, I was part of that Jacobs proposal a few years back. So I'm not really going to go over all the highlights because Charlie went into that, but essentially, three duplex buildings, one triplex building to start. Remember, this is just an initiation. All the design details, all that, well, you'll have plenty of time to ask those questions later. All we're asking for is, can you please let us go ahead and work all these out? Existing area photographs and existing bird's eye to get you a little bit better perspective, a little bit different perspective than what Charlie showed. This is the south end, that's the north end, and we're going to really try to squeeze the buildings in and tighten them in to really enhance the security and minimize any impacts of the surrounding area. So here's the existing site plan, a little bit of a blow-up at the south end. You can see the courtyards that Charlie talked about, they're all shared in common. Rather than private courtyards, there'd be one large area that people can share. Again, kind of talking about relationships and everybody kind of getting along. So on the north side, there's the triplex building that's shown. Like Charlie said, it may be two, it may be one, but it will be very compact compared to what we had proposed before. One of the issues, the questions that was asked, is do you have a strategic plan? They have in fact prepared a strategic plan, and as Charlie mentioned, a couple of the goals of the plan, in addition to the physical things that we're proposing, it is anticipated that we're going to actually increase the number of hours. Right now, it's only open Sundays. We want to open Saturdays, and in fact, open more. So it's not just a Sunday thing. We're going to open more hours, more days, and in fact, we're going to offer programs on Saturday afternoon where right now, we offer none. So that's a good thing. So with that, we thank Charlie and city staff. We worked hard with him to try to come up with something that we can all agree with. And we ask that you approve the staff recommendation that endorses the initiation of this plan and allows us to go forward, and we can hopefully see you back in three months or so. And with the final plan, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'll move on. As I said, I've got a rather thick pile of all-white speaker slips. There's nobody opposed here, so I'm going to go through these. If you find that the person in front of you just said everything that you were going to say, feel free, we'll think nonetheless of you if you just sort of say, "I agree with what's been said." So we'll go through these, and first speaker I have is Haiki Gronlund.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Haiki Gronlund. I am the First Vice President of the House of Pacific Relations this year, and obviously, I'm here to ask for your consideration and support for this initiation. We are an 80-year-old institution this year. As Balboa Park celebrates its centennial, HPR is 80 years old. I believe we are the oldest continuously functioning international organization in the country. I do know that we're older than the UN. We do this as a volunteer work. We all do this out of love of our country and culture, and we wish to bring it to the citizens of San Diego and the region as well. As Vicky and others have mentioned also, we are 33 nations currently. We are constrained at the moment by the lack of cottages in which to present our cultures and speakers in a formal setting, because the Hall of Nations that has been used by these nations that do not have a cottage of their own is currently under construction, and we don't know for how long. It was originally set aside to be improved for the ADA law, and in that process, it was found that it was lacking a foundation, and that now means that the Hall of Nations is untenable. We don't have a venue for presenting our cultures. This adds urgency, if you like, to the need for additional cottages. We have support right now. I could also mention from the mayor's office from last July, from the International Affairs Board, which is an advisory council, they are all in favor of this, and as we mentioned, the Balboa Park Commission has also approved this idea of initiation for the plan. So with that, I'll conclude and ask for your positive vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker I have is Sanan Debré.
Hello. I represent House of Turkey. House of Turkey represents several thousand Turkish-Americans in San Diego and tens of thousands of Turkish-Americans in California. We wish to build a home in the heart of one of the most important parks in the country. We will share the Turkish culture, history, music, and cuisine with San Diegans, and will contribute to the diverse fabric of this city. We have been pursuing this dream for 10 years, now patiently waiting for the process to take its course and our voices to be heard. In the meantime, we are also financially ready to build these houses. As residents of this fine city and as an essential part of the larger fabric of the American way of living, Turkish-Americans would like America's finest city to give us the green light and permission to start this project. Ultimately, this project is not about building nine cottages, but it is about the cultural pride of thousands of San Diegans and their desire to share it with fellow San Diegans and millions of visitors who come to this beautiful city. In addition, this project builds goodwill, promotes peace, understanding among different cultures, and we need this in today's world. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker I have is Aldi De Castro.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Aldi De Castro. I'm the Philippine Honorary Consul for San Diego, and in my role as the official government agent for the Philippines, I'm here to represent the Philippine-American interests as well as promote diplomatic trade and binational diplomatic relations between the two countries. I want to express my support for this item eight. I think my community, which a lot of whom are here today, would be very supportive of having a house representing the Philippines, us being one of the largest ethnic minority communities in San Diego County. I won't repeat that it will enhance the cultural value and experience of San Diego. I will say from my country's perspective that I think it would be a lot easier for me to promote tourism and trade and diplomatic relations when I'm representing the United States in the Philippines. I think it would be a very positive effect of having a welcome mat, and so for that reason, for those reasons, I would like to support item eight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker I have is Enrique Morones.
Buenos dias. My name is Enrique Morones, and I'm a native of San Diego. I grew up on the southeasternmost corner of Balboa Park. I was the captain of the St. Augustine Cross Country Team that used to train at Balboa Park, and in my youth, I worked at the Starlight Theater, security. So I'm as local as local -- that's local as local can be. I'm also the founder of the House of Mexico. Back in 1995, I went to Balboa Park when I was the president of the San Diego County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and the vice president of the San Diego Padres in charge of Latino and international marketing under Larry Lucchino, and I went there to hold an event for Mexican Independence Day. My girlfriend back then was Swedish, and as I'm looking through the houses, I cannot believe that there was not a House of Mexico. So we ended up having the event at the House of Sweden. And I said, "There's something wrong with this picture." So that's when I started the effort to have a House of Mexico. And we had an initial exploratory committee made up by the Mexican consulate, by the San Diego Union Tribune, Radio Latina, Univision, Fleishman Hillard, PR Company, San Diego State, a lot of different people. And we got the ball rolling and so forth, and then 10 years later, we officially became members of the House of Pacific Relations. So this dream has been going on for more than 20 years, officially more than 20 years. And actually, we should have already had a house, and that's another story, the things that took place, and I actually had to even get the city attorney involved with what was going on back then. But we're here today. We're here today, and we're delighted that there's nine countries being considered, and all lives in all countries matter. The houses that are there today are San Diego's yesteryear. The nine houses that want to have houses today are San Diego today. We are who San Diego is today. The communities of color, the diversity that you see with the houses that are being considered and so forth. I remember when I went to see Charlie with Gonzalo Rojas a long time ago and said, "Hey, listen, why isn't there a House of Mexico?" So what we're asking is that this plan be approved this year. This year is a historic year. In September, we celebrate Mexican Independence Day. I was just with the president and the governor of Baja California. They're really excited about joining us and the other eight countries in some sort of a big celebration here in Balboa Park. We all know what we went through for the centennial, but the centennial is upon us. So we're asking, please approve these houses, because today's population wants to be able to go and say, "I'm proud to be Mexican, I'm proud to be Filipino, Turkish." Whatever country you're from, all countries are wonderful, and let's be able to celebrate that, not only for the San Diego citizens, but for the citizens of the world, because Balboa Park is a true treasure, as is all the countries. So we really want to move forward with this process. I invite you to join us, our installation, which will be on January 31st. I have an invitation for all of you here and a brochure, and it will be celebrated at the Prado Museum, I mean, at the Prado Restaurant, right there in Balboa Park. Balboa Park is wonderful. This is a beautiful city, and these countries deserve to have a house in Balboa Park. So thank you very much. Muchas gracias. And thanks for everybody, Charlie and Vicky, and everybody that's been working on this so diligently, the House of Pacific Relations people. Muchas gracias. Y si se puede.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker I have is George Novinger.
Good morning, everybody. George Novinger, I'm president of the House of Peru, married to the honorary consul of Peru. to the honorary consul of Peru emeritus. That's how that came about. I'm also the chairperson of the New International Cottages Committee of HPR, and as such, in charge of kind of organizing the process as we move through. I'm also an executive board member of HPR, so I am very well-integrated into this whole effort. I'm also a San Diego Diplomacy Council member, which is a program that works with State Department to bring visitors here to San Diego to learn more about America and then take that back home. It's a great program. I can speak about that also from the perspective of my career as a former American diplomat for 25 years. I retired two years ago. I came to San Diego and see that the international relations, part of what San Diego does, probably has potential to improve itself a bit and become a more internationalized city than it already is in terms of how we relate to other countries. And I think that this effort to give the nine countries full-time access there in the park to help spread its art and culture, these various countries and places, can only help us enhance and burnish that international reputation, both with visitors to the park, but also, as our colleague from the Philippines stated to people when we travel back to the other countries, to say, "We do have a House of Peru. We do have a House of Mexico. We do have a House of Philippines, et cetera." These are really important things to us. So we're really very enthusiastic about making this project move, and we have taken a lot of steps as HPR, House of Pacific Relations, to make sure that we're not only Sunday afternoons cottages open. In fact, I think at the latest thing for 2015, we have something like 765 individual activities that are being put on by these various 33 houses, plus a house that's just joined, a House of Korea, and that number will only increase if we each have our own individual buildings to run those activities. And so we would ask your support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker I have is Cynthia Swero Gabler. All right, we'll hold that one just in case. Next speaker I have is Roman Sabatachi, I think.
Oh, I agree with her.
All right, thank you.
I agree with you.
See, you didn't have to speak, and I still butchered your name, so there you go. Next one I have is Julia Legospi. Great, thank you. And I don't think I butchered your name, so I'm getting better. Francine Magui.
Maige, it was very good.
I like it better when you say it.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Francine Maige, and of the many hats I wear in the PhilAm community here, one of them is as an inaugural delegate to the Filipino-American Young Leaders Program, which was assembled by the ambassador to the US from the Philippines, Ambassador Kweisha, and one of our main goals is to allow programs that really encourage our youth to feel proud about their community, their culture, and then go on to share it. So this project, and I'm going to keep it nice and short, can only really promote all of that. So I thank you, and in our language, we say salamat, which is, we thank you with great respect. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker I have is Mirna Reyes.
Um, they have said everything that I wanted to say.
Thank you. All right, next speaker is, you have wonderful handwriting, just very small, Altisha Ruffante?
I agree with you.
Thank you. Saleem Shah.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Saleem Shah. I'm a resident and citizen of San Diego for the last 30 years. I joined the House of India about 10 years ago. Just as my previous speakers have mentioned, that when you come to the park and see that you don't have a house, then you feel, "Why?" And so we made an effort and got it going. I've been very active in the House of Public Relations. One of our members is a board member, and I, like George, I'm also a member of the Citizens Diplomacy Council, so we get to meet a lot of overseas visitors, and we try to take them to Balboa Park especially. We've had a lot of activities there. We've had the Festival of Lights in the last weekend of October, where almost 10,000 people come to celebrate that event. We've had the open house and the Hall of Nations. A lot of students come during the week to learn about the other cultures, so these are very important issues, not just for the fine city, but for the diversity of our city, that we have to have more houses, more opportunities to present these things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker I have is Colbert Guy.
I agree with Mr. Saleem Shah.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Gina Engler.
Good morning. I agree with all that has been said. I represent the House of Panama, and we're excited to celebrate the centennial this year and hope to break ground by the end of the year, and we really need your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have three speaker slips remaining. All three said they may not need to speak, but I'll just double-check to make sure. Joseph Malabalan?
Also, the Philippines supports all the previous speakers, sir.
Thank you very much. And last speaker I have is Rami Laporo, I think?
Lepel?
Yes. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
It's been a tough morning for reading names. Sorry.
Good morning. My name is Romel Alberto. I'm actually a resident of Pahue, but I come to San Diego to share the history and culture of the Philippines to the visitors of Balboa Park. Many are very surprised to learn that Filipinos were here with the Portola Exhibition in, not exhibition, but expedition in 1769, and they're also surprised to learn that we've been here in California in 1587. So that's a couple of tidbits that I want to share with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That is the extent of the speaker slips I have, so if there's anybody who still would like to speak and maybe hasn't filled out a speaker slip, let me know. Otherwise, we will go ahead and close public testimony, and we'll go to Commission Deliberation. Commissioner Wagner, your first up.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Charlie, can you please go to the conceptual site plan, House of Pacific Relations Attachment E? Here we go. Thank you, sir. First, let me say, a very wonderful and thorough report with everyone. I'm in complete appreciation for the project's necessity in its moving forward, and look forward to the initiation. My main concern, using the park usually on a, multiple times a week, is ensuring that during your development phases, that you'll keep open your normal tram artery. There actually is also a pedestrian corridor as well. I know the street's not labeled. It's that one-way traffic on the north side of the development. What's the name of that?
This is the one I'm going to address earlier.
Yeah.
That's called PanAmerica Road West.
So it's important to me that PanAmerica Road West, as well as the pedestrian access of the sidewalk on the northwest side, remain open through each phase of development. It is quite a well-used portion of the park, especially to get to some of the other exhibits over in your western corner there, and to get to the Air and Space Museum, as well as the tram using that. Are you able to commit that that remains open throughout your phases of development?
Yes, most definitely. Those components are very important to us as well. There are a lot of activities that go on at the Balboa Park Club, and we certainly don't want that area compromised for the people who use that building, and there are a lot of people who walk along Palm Canyon there, and I can guarantee you, we're going to keep the trams operating throughout everything, and pedestrian and vehicular traffic will remain untouched during construction.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure it didn't get green-fenced off for three months at a time.
It's highly unlikely that all of these cottages are going to be built at the same time. It's been my experience that they're essentially built one at a time, at least on the previous four cottages that were built, and so it doesn't all happen at once, and the construction footprint is usually quite small, and deliveries are minimal.
Got that. Thank you very much, Charlie. Yeah, it's very important to me that, in order to keep our circular traffic in that portion of the park and to keep the other portions thriving, that that remain open and not get fenced off. With that, I'd like to move the initiation, find the criteria that is identified in the general plan's use and community planning element, and initiate the amendment. I'll second that.
We have a first from Commissioner Wagner, a second from Commissioner Austin. Commissioner Wagner, is that the extent of your comments then? Commissioner Pearson.
I just had a couple of questions. There was a slide that showed the nine nations that would be housed in these new cottages. Will that accommodate the nations that are currently doubled up in the Hall of Nations now?
I would have to turn to the House of Pacific Relations to answer that question.
In brief, no. There will be two or three houses that will still be needing to use the Hall of Nations for their exhibits and cultural displays.
And will each cottage be fully supported and funded by those nations and their fundraising efforts to construct, as well as to maintain the cottages?
As Charlie has stated, probably not all at once, but yes, all will be part of the nine.
Terrific. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, sir. I'm glad you have this slide up. I think that clustering the two areas for the buildings makes a lot of sense. I like that the patio is a shared patio, rather than little cordoned-off, little-walled kind of courtyards. I would see that those outdoor patios would have a lot of activities, a lot of shared space. I also think it's terrific that you kept the two lawn areas that I've seen where art shows are usually conducted. Maybe, Charlie, you can point those out. Yeah, that lawn, and then there's the lawn there, and then around the corner right. So it seems to me that those impromptu, or maybe they're not impromptu, they probably have permits, but the art shows that come up, this doesn't conflict with that, correct? The location for the cottages?
That is correct. That's actually where the cottages were originally proposed and why the previous application was denied.
Okay, because I would not support it out on that lawn, so I'm glad to see that you've clustered it back in those two locations you have. And I know this is down the road. There'll be plans coming forward, but I look forward to seeing the landscape plan, because I do think having these cottages appear as though they're set in the trees, and I'm looking at Miss Estrada, because one of the things that's important, I think, is that it is really this wonderful environment in which you go from house to house, and it is clustered. The buildings are clustered. The trees provide this wonderful canopy. I know for visibility, you probably will be careful about shrubbery. Again, I'm trying not to design it, but I do think there are security issues. There's places where people are sleeping, and having sight visibility across is really important, and having the trees that are really create this wonderful environment. Circulation, I know you'll meet all the ADA requirements, and similar to Commissioner Wagner's comments, making sure that the area is fully accessible during construction. Will there be a study of new or expanded restroom facilities? Because that is something that I was curious about when we talked about the third finding for public facilities.
Each of the duplexes would have its own restroom integral. I'm not sure what their policies will be on having those available to visitors, but obviously, they would be open, you know, only when the cottages are open. We do have the restrooms that are across the street from the Oregon Pavilion, right in this location here, but we're not anticipating constructing a new restroom facility that's open, you know, normal hours, you know, like the other park facilities in this location. We do also have restroom facilities in the Balboa Park Club that people can use whenever those doors are open.
And so if the hours are extended beyond Sundays, those facilities would be open and in use for the public, those restroom facilities?
I believe so. Again, it's up to each of the nations to allow people to use their restrooms or not. So I can't tell them what to do in that regard.
I understand, but I do know, and I've waited in line at some of those public restrooms. And I know that the success is only going to be more when you have nine more cottages. So I'm not here to solve, and it's going to be decided among all of you, but I think it's important that we have ample accessible public facilities for people to use when they visit the park. I guess, on a personal note, I'm a native San Diegan, and as a child, our Sundays, we're going to church and then coming over to the cottages, and I have wonderful memories. I still go there today, not just as a child, in the Oregon Pavilion, and I am fully supportive of this, and I think that bringing in diversity in cultures and really an exchange of information, an exchange of knowledge, and just getting to know other people and hearing their history. I've learned two new facts about the Philippines, which I greatly appreciate, and the Panama-Pacific exposition, as you all know, the 100-year celebration is this year, so I wholeheartedly support this project, and I do hope that you can have your groundbreaking within the 2015 calendar year. Thank you.
Commissioner Kieros.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming down and speaking. It's quite amazing to hear everything that you have to say, especially the gentleman from the Turkish community. Looks like he's left, but I think he so eloquently put the real importance of how the cultures of all of our neighbors are so important to this city, and I agree with my colleagues here. I think that this is a great project. So far as the initiation is concerned, a couple of questions. Where, you know, I have a great respect for the Park and Rec Board and how wonderful of a job that they do, and I'd like to know, because I don't think that you said it, but does this go to them at all? Have they seen this?
Boy, I wish I had the slide from my presentation to the Balboa Park Committee. It kind of outlines the long trail that this project will go through. The first component of initiation only goes to the planning group, the Balboa Park Committee, and to the Planning Commission. Assuming the Planning Commission approves initiation of amendments, this will go back to the Balboa Park Committee, which is a committee of the Park and Recreation Board for workshops and development of the final plan amendments, and actually, a general development plan, a more refined graphic than what you've seen in the presentation today. It would then also go to the Historic Resources Board's Design Assistance Subcommittee. From there, it would go to the, excuse me, the Park and Recreation Board's Design Review Committee. It would then go to the Park and Recreation Board. From there, if necessary, it would go to the Historic Resources Board. From there, it would go to the Planning Commission, and then from there, to Council Committee, and then to the City Council. So that is the long trek that this project has to go through.
Wow.
There will be a quiz after this presentation.
I do agree with Commissioner Pearson. I'm going to be very interested to see how you deal through the initiation with the landscaping. I love the trees that are there. I think that those are such an important part, so I am looking forward to seeing how that is dealt with within the project, within the amendment. I do, you know, quite some time ago, I was told about the House of Mexico or the lack of, which I think is a shame for the city, just because, you know, they're our neighbor, and I think that it is so important that we have a House of Mexico, so I was thrilled to see that that's on there. But my question is, to what extent are those set in stone? Are those definitely going to be the nine houses? Yes.
My answer is that staff cannot really... My answer is that staff cannot really attest to that. We have the Central Mesa Precise Plan, which is the more specific document that details the allowed expansion. How that expansion space is used up is basically delegated to House of Pacific Relations, as it was in the first four cottages that were added.
But to answer your question, in speaking with the House of Pacific Relations, the answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I can make all of the findings that you've made, so I'll be approving this. Thank you.
Commissioner Austin.
I think you actually answered my questions, but let me make sure I'm sure. So we go through all this long road, and so you expect to get to the end of that road at what date? When do you expect to get to the end of that long road that you laid out for us and we're going to be tested on?
Well, I've seen plan amendment, plan amendments go anywhere. Well, we'll not talk about the Plaza de Panama project, but basically, anywhere from six months to a year to get to the point where they can start working on construction drawings for the cottages. If I'm to throw a dart, I'm going to say this process is going to be done in about nine months, simply because we do have to get to each of the committees and boards that I've noted. We also have to submit the project for a public project assessment to Development Services. They need to have an environmental document in draft form before it can go to the Park and Recreation Board. It has to be in final form before it goes to the planning, to the Historic Resources Board and the Planning Commission and City Council. And also, I don't have any control over Vicky Estrada, not that anybody does. It's up to them to actually prepare the plan amendments themselves. And the quicker that's done and the quicker we can get on Balboa Park Committee agendas and get through the design process, the quicker it can happen.
All right. Well, good. I mean, it's exciting. And Vicky, now we know that it's all on you. So that's great. You know, it was interesting, because I heard a statistic the other day that 40% of the cost of a house in San Diego is due to the government process. And you get to see why. But I can't wait to see this. I applaud everybody who came, and it's a great addition. And I know this is a very, very sensitive site, so it has to be done right. Thank you.
All right. Did you have a comment? Yes, please.
I'd like to just make one more comment, actually, notation. I'd like to introduce Bruce Martinez. He is the Deputy Director of the Develop Regional Parks Division of the Park and Rec Department. He is basically the man in charge of Balboa Park and Mission Bay Park and all the shoreline parks. He's heard all of your comments. He's going to make sure that this gets done per your comments, or else. So again, Mr. Martinez, I don't know if he raised his hand. There you go. So he's heard everything you've said today. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. I would agree with the comments made by my colleagues. I do want to thank you for a great presentation. And it was incredibly thorough and informative, but a little humor thrown in there doesn't hurt us here either. And the same goes to our speakers today, too. Thank you very much for being on point, and your enthusiasm was appreciated. It's nice not to get beat up on cell towers every now and then, too. So it's a nice way to end the day versus to start the day, so to speak. So, you know, from a standpoint of an initiation, which I have to keep telling myself that that's what we're here for today, too. I think you've heard the comments about landscaping. I would also just want to echo just things like accessibility and all that we'll be looking for on the final plan to make sure that everybody is afforded the equal opportunity to get to these cottages as well, too, which are long, long, long overdue. So this is in seven-plus years. I don't think I can remember an easier vote, because I will be supporting this one. So I can't imagine somebody not voting for it. But that's, I'll put the pressure on my colleagues here to see there. So with that, if we can go ahead and bring up the voting screen? Commissioner Wagner, I don't think you're in yet. All right, that passes five to zero with Commissioners Whalen and Haas absent. And with that, I will adjourn Planning Commission for today. Thank you very much.